The house that we own, that has been part of history, part of the history of Hamilton, actually was owned by the gentleman who gave the land to be a township, Hamilton property, was donated by Captain A.J. Hamilton and it's the house he resided in before he passed. And we're gonna talk about how we preserve it and how we bring it to standards that will allow us to use it as a showplace maybe for our future. Andrea's been looking over what's needed. I think we need to let her talk to us in this room today and I think we need to plan a meeting with her at the site real soon to really get her visual of what she's trying to tell us. We're gonna need Andrea's help in this because she knows so much about the compliance issues that we face with this house and how to walk through that without having to redo and redo again to become compliant. So, much against my normal routine here, we're gonna, we're gonna take Andrea out of turn today, let her just explain to us and leave her list with us and then we're gonna follow her up with another meeting and she's gonna move on. Then we're gonna give the rest of the afternoon to Mr. Blanton and his associates here to go over some matters of how we better sell Hamilton, Alabama to the public and how we work on maybe our communications through our webpage and other things that he can help us with. So, we're real proud of both of our guests today and Andrea is our working partner here in Hamilton anyway and Mr. Blanton has introduced himself to our community and he believes he can help us. So, with that said, we're gonna move into the meeting and I'm gonna let Andrea address us first. Now Andrea, I won't know a word you've said if you leave your mask on. So, will you stand right over there and talk?
Okay, I'll do that.
Where I can hear you.
I'll be happy to.
Cause I'll have, I'll have to understand you. My hearing is so bad, I can't understand you with that matter's coming.
Okay, um, thank you for having me. We, this is a project that had begun and then kind of got hit pause. And so, I'm gonna show you a map on this handout of where we had gotten to. I kinda have, you know, the basics drawn up, but we were working on the parking lot for the county commission that we did jointly with them providing ADA parking spaces. And then that's got a map of, a plan of the Hamilton house on there. It's also got a letter of recommendation that helped us to get a grant for $7,000.
And we still have that money and we need to spend it.
It has to be used for repairs before August 21st, uh, August 31st to 21. So, we've got some time and we can use that. This, if you wanna pass that around, just glance at it. Um, this is the form that you'll fill out, the city will, to give a report of how the grant money is used. So, that would go along with that project. And I'll move into the list of things we've gotta do there to get it compliant so that you are ready to open it either as a, let's pass it to the council members, um, to be used by someone such as the chamber, or you could use it as an annex to the city for meetings to be used by the community. You could use club meetings or something there. Uh, the Arts Council might want an office there, or the Marion County Historical Society has kind of been caretakers of it at this point, but, um, our hope is to see it utilized and enjoyed by the community. Uh, presently it's used for photo shoots for seniors and all of that. You know, it's a well-loved location and some of the repairs were done and had little problems with some of those repairs and then there's been some wear and tear on it that need to be repaired as well. This is a landing that doesn't meet code and this is an example of a handrail that we may put on a new ramp. So, you can pass that around. Let me go over the list a little bit. Um, we've got exterior lighting to consider on the exits and landing and ramp. Got the restroom building that has some problems. We've got to fix the ramp that's in the picture there and provide some changes to some of the outlets in the building. The main house, the back porch, has a wooden ramp now that is in disrepair and doesn't meet code. So, we'll have to fix that and that, that map kinda, the plan shows where we'll relocate it. And, uh, what else? Let's see. I'll try to speak through here. Some of the thresholds are like two by floors. In other words, a wheelchair can't roll over that. So, we're gonna have to make it accessible by letting someone get through the door and into the rooms at least on the first level. If we rope off the second floor, you can still have a video of the second floor to show someone who's maybe in a wheelchair or something that can't go to the second floor. That's how the ADA allows you to meet the needs of those that can't go up the stairs or whatever. So, um, that's what I would recommend. The, um, door swings, some of the pickets are rotten on the, the replaced pickets. We've seen that. So, it's unsafe. And then the interior stairwell, the handrails rickety. You've gotta meet a 250 pound requirement. So, that would need to be reinforced. Um, let's see. Uh, you know, there are some floodlights that have wiring on top of the ground right now and they look beautiful with a Christmas decoration, but they need to be fixed.
They look fine, don't they?
So, um, let's see, the signage and some things with, um, fire safety would need to be fixed. And, uh, that's about it, I think. This is a short checklist, but there is some extensive rotten wood, some roof repairs that you gotta get in there and see how much is damaged and then, you know, do that kinda on a unit cost basis. In other words, we won't know how much wood they'll replace. They'll just give us a unit cost for one square foot of plywood or whatever, you know, and we'll, we'll mop quite that. The, um...
Just for a second, Nolan, how many of you have been inside, how many of our council have been inside the Hamilton house before?
I have not.
No?
I was in it a long time ago, but not here.
Oh.
It's, it's quite an amazing piece of work. Uh, if we don't repair it though, we're gonna have a real big mess. And we gotta repair it in, in a fashion that makes us compliant in some of the areas. The list here is pretty inclusive. I think most of the things that we wanted to cover are actually on this list. And, uh, quite honest, I think we've been kinda in limbo about who's gonna do this work. Are we gonna let a carpenter do the work or are we gonna let a contractor do the work? And sometimes when you get a carpenter, they'll do a pretty, a pretty job, but it's not compliant when, when it's finished. So, have you got any recommendation on, on?
I totally recommend bidding the job and having a general contractor or someone who's licensed do the work and have contract administration, construction administration, someone on site watching them. That's what I put down here below. I said, um, my plans will be evaluating it from a historical standpoint and also from an existing building standpoint. Codes are not, not exactly the same for a new building as they are for those that you go in and renovate. So, you have to kinda look at that in context. Um, a life safety code will be provided. Uh, the state, the plans will need to go to state for review for ADA compliance. So, we'll have a little lull. I'll send the plans off and then they'll come back. And, um, plans will be available for review and bid posted locally, starting with a, I would recommend a pre-bid walkthrough with the contractors bidding on it and make that mandatory. And then, uh, we would have OSI meetings. In other words, during their work, someone from the city, someone from the company doing the work and myself that's owner, contractor, architect, OSI, OSI. And, um, so that's who would meet on a regular basis to make sure that progress is being made and done properly in a field report file.
What you might find is some contractors who bid, um, don't want to bid because of the unknowns of the old structure. You know, I'm gonna bid on this job and then I'm gonna find this when I get there and I'm gonna be expected to make these repairs that weren't revealed in the initial bid. So, I mean, I think we're gonna have to work through this with tedious, it'll be, it'll be not your normal contracting job. Repairs like this, there's gonna be some unexpected that'll be found. It's inevitable. Um, we need her expertise to guide us. If, if we wind up getting a carpenter to do this work, we're gonna have to have somebody looking over his shoulders every day, making sure that this job comes along in the fashion that we can be proud of it when it's over and that we're compliant and we've got our work done. So, I don't know if we were gonna find that contractor that's gonna bid on this job. I don't think it's gonna be an easy thing to do unless we just are willing to just say, disguise the limit on what you can charge us, you know. Uh, I think it's gonna just be very, very hard to get somebody to walk in there and just give us, this is my bid, you know. I'm gonna bid a competitive bid. Most people are gonna wanna bid a cost plus job, I think, instead of competitive bidding. So, get ready. That's what I'm warning you about. When we fix this house, I think we'll spend a lot of money.
I think the season, you know, it's winter and that kind of impacts who bids on the projects. And it may be small to you, but there are large companies that do small projects and some that enjoy historical projects. And I actually, in the earlier...
That's where we're looking for.
And in the earlier, um, um, when we did this work to begin with and hit pause, I had a contractor look at it and he was interested in the job. So, I think there are contractors out there that...
I hope I'm wrong.
That will be interested when it comes out to bid. And, um, if not, then we can seek out those architects. If you put it out to bid and no one bids, then you're able to go and get contractors that might be interested and negotiate with them. So...
All right. We've got our, we've got our guidelines. When do, when do we wanna meet over at the house? What day? We wanna meet Andrea over there and really do a walkthrough and see what we gotta really look at.
After the first of the year? Or do you wanna do it before?
Just do it before.
Okay.
Just get on it.
Yep.
All right. Um, Monday we have the wreath ceremony downtown. Would y'all want to all come to the wreath ceremony and then after that we walk over?
Next Monday at noon, we're gonna do the wreaths across the...
Y'all know about that? Okay. I keep posting it on Facebook. I think everybody's tired of seeing that announcement.
We're gonna call all the mayors on that list Friday so they can't forget it by Monday.
I think that's a good idea.
We'll hear from you Friday.
Monday's terrible, but I like it work.
I just wonder if we should do it first thing one morning and...
That'd be fun. I can...
And, and do it and that way we can all get back to work.
Seven thirty?
I'm interested in meeting over there.
Does Tuesday be a better day for y'all? What, I mean, Mondays are getting everybody going day.
Tuesday's probably better.
It doesn't matter to me.
Do you see better for me?
Tuesday morning would be amazing.
Okay, Tuesday morning at what time?
Seven thirty.
Okay.
Eight, three hundred.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, seven thirty.
Well, I'll be there at seven thirty.
I'll give you the tour.
She loves morning.
Got a question back here.
We had a set of keys.
I've got the set of keys.
Yes, but I don't, I don't have another set. I gave one set, um, for the pest solution. So, we'll probably need another set of keys at some point in time.
Well, I'll give it back to whoever needs.
No, you can just...
I'll have it that day.
Get it some later sometime. That would be great. Cause pest solutions has the other set really good.
All right. Well, it sounds like a plan.
Thanks for seeing you Tuesday morning.
Are these mine? No. Okay. You got your list?
I just need one list, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Can we get a copy of that now? Or that drawing and everything?
Well, let me, uh, I'll bring it to the meeting.
Okay.
Cause I'll, I'll just, I'll take that off of it and do a bigger one.
Okay.
You can't really read it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. See you next week. Good luck.
Mr. Blanton, you wanna come to the head of the table? You wanna talk to me?
Whatever's good for y'all, whatever you prefer. You tell me.
Let me just scoot around where I can see you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Take us, take us from here.
All right, I'll do it. Well, I appreciate you guys, um, having us. Do you want me to stand? Is that okay?
Whatever you...
I'll, I'll stand. Have you got, Judy, have you got me?
Thank you.
Okay.
I forgot my name.
Um, so my name's Al Blanton and, um, since 2011, I have been running a company called Blanton Media Group. Um, we started out as just a print publication. Um, our print publication's called Seventy-eight Magazine. We've been doing that since 2012, uh, in the Jasper market, Jasper slash Walker County market. Uh, we kinda rocked on as solely a print publication for, I guess, four or five years. And about 2016, we added social media management to the, uh, list of services that we offer. And that was an absolute game changer for my business. It worked well because we had a print publication and we kinda, those things worked in concert with one another. Um, so we, we've been doing social media management for businesses, organizations, um, and recently governmental entities. Um, this past year, we were asked by the Walker County Commission to help with their PR. And, um, that has really been an eye opener for me and my company. And we've been working with the commission uh, since March of this year on their public relations. Um, this whole project has been an absolute blast for me. I've, um, never thought I'd be a business owner. I was a basketball coach in a former life. I was the former head basketball coach at Devil State Community College in Jasper. And, um, before that, I was, uh, went to law school at Alabama and, uh, don't practice law and I'm a magazine publisher now and, and, uh, help businesses. So, um, so over the course of the last, you know, few years, we've really been, um, focusing on helping Jasper and Jasper businesses. Uh, since COVID hit, um, I've really been thinking about ways to expand, um, what we're doing. We're looking at other markets. Um, Hamilton seemed like a very natural extension of what we were doing. And so, um, what I'll, and we've got some packets here for you and I would love for y'all to, uh, pick up some magazines. We've got plenty of magazines out here for you. But, uh, what I would like to do is just bring our program to Marion County, um, to Hamilton. We wanna do a, a print publication here. Uh, we wanna offer social media management for the city, um, the various departments within the city. We wanna offer social media manage, management services for local businesses and we wanna help you with your PR and photography. So, um, you know, I, I think one of the most important things for, um, for us and for Walker County, um, from a PR standpoint is that we give, we give the county a voice. You know, I think that's very important. I think it's very important, especially in today's times with social media management, with social media being so prevalent, um, and with the, just the nature of life now. It's so important to communicate with citizens. I think, um, for all its faults and issues that people have with it, social media is a great way to communicate with people. Um, right now, we're, we're managing about, um, fifty pages. We're managing governmental, uh, pages, uh, business pages and we're very comfortable doing that. And so, uh, what we would like to do for y'all is to, um, you know, manage the, I think we did, probably need to create the city's Facebook page, manage that, and then manage all the department pages as well. Um, so, social media management is number one. From a print standpoint, uh, what we would like to do is come in and start a print magazine that we publish twice a year. Um, uh, as I was thinking about this, I was thinking, well, let's, let's do it one time a year. I think twice a year, um, makes it a little bit more viable. Um, and, um, and that's what we wanna do. Aaron, if you don't mind, if you'd just maybe pass a couple of those out to just kinda let everybody...
They got it.
Okay, they got them. Okay. Um, so, um, we wanna bring a magazine of this quality to your, to your town. Um, this would be something solely for Hamilton. Um, and we believe that this could be something that, um, could really spotlight local businesses, um, could be a historical thing, uh, could help celebrate people. That's kinda what we, what we try to do is just in our publication. When we're coming up with our editorial calendar, we're thinking from a people's standpoint. I'm, I'm thinking about what person can I highlight. And so, um, that's what we wanna do with our business. We wanna grow people's business and we wanna celebrate people. Um, we're storytellers. We, we love to tell stories. And so, the great thing about, one of the great things about what Seventy-eight has done in the Jasper community is it's kinda helped you learn a little bit more about your neighbor. You know, that, that person that you run into at the coffee shop every day. You know, you, um, uh, you may talk to them, but you may not know their story. And so, we've sort of dived deep into people's stories and, um, we really think that it's just kinda taken Jasper to another level and it's been really a source of pride for, um, Jasper and Walker County. So, um, I don't wanna sit up here and talk all day and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about what we do, um, even how we would make this work logistically, uh, just sort of anything that you guys... Oh, I wanna say one more thing. Um, uh, the other thing is, is, is from a city standpoint is PR. Um, we met Judy. I know the paper's here and, and what we wanna try to do is, is again, work in concert with these different media outlets. Um, in, in working with the, the county commission, uh, in Jasper, I've noticed that like, um, a, a lot of times, you know, we'll send out press releases that maybe the paper didn't get. So, we work well with the paper in Jasper, I think, um, to, uh, to get that news out to, to a greater audience. So, but it's not just local. It's, it's, you know, can we do something for this community to connect Hamilton to an even larger audience? You know, it's very, very important to, to get the word out to the citizenry and the people that are local here and get, and work well with the local news outlets. Uh, but certainly you want to, you know, at some point and when it's, when it's pertinent, pertinent and newsworthy to get that, that message out there to an even larger audience. And so, again, we just wanna give the city a voice. We wanna, um, we wanna be at city council meetings and work sessions. Uh, we wanna send out information via press release and then at the same time, um, report that positive news, community events, announcements, different things that you guys wanna get out to the public, the important things to get out to, you know, the local citizens here in Hamilton. So, um, what questions do you have for me? I've, I've talked enough.
How many, uh, webpages are you, uh, managing at this point, Al?
Right now, we're managing about fifty. Um, and, um, we have, everybody that's on our team manages social media. But it's kind of a rite of passage. I mean, if you're gonna be working for Blanton Media Group, you're probably gonna be running social media pages. Um, and we've got account managers that, that handle it. They have other duties as well. Um, and so, uh, you know, I feel like we've developed a system over the last four years that really works. I mean, we, um, you know, from a logistical standpoint, we have a way that we go about doing things. Um, we brought Erin in, um, a few months ago and one of the things that I think has been great about what she has done is it's, she's helped us to look more internally about how we're doing things, the procedures and the processes by which we go about things. And, and we really, um, tweak those things and we've gotten better because of the insight that Erin has brought to the table. So, um, this will be a little bit of a challenge logistically for us. Um, we wanna, we wanna hire a point of contact person that's from the area. We want a local person to be a part of this. We're looking for somebody currently to, to do that. Um, and so, um, we believe there's, that this, this market is underserved in that, in, in that arena. Um, we believe that, that, um, you know, you guys need some PR, social media and, and print help. And so, that's what we're here to offer.
What webpages, I mean, what cities are you already working with that we can look up just to see as far as their webpages that you, that you've got?
Yeah, so, um, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a good thing because, um, with our work with the, with Walker County Commission in that I, I have a magazine. Um, you know, it's not like I'm, um, just a lone ranger out there sending, sending press releases out. The great thing about it is, is that we have a publication that, 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 you know, we can publish local news to. That's seventyeightmag.com. Um, and that's something that we've been, um, historically on that site, we have been more profile oriented. Um, recently, when we've started doing work with the commission, we've gotten more local news oriented. So, we do have that capability of, of publishing that. Um, we have access to the county commission, uh, Walker County Commission website. Um, we don't do a lot of posting to that, but we do help with that. Um, there's a manager that works with that. So, we haven't, um, we use seventyeightmag.com as our, as our means to be able to publish. And then obviously, we've got the magazine as well. So, um, what we would do if we were coming into this community is look at, look at starting another website. Um, so...
But you could help us with our website as far as design and making sure of getting the correct information on there and...
We, we could, but I will say this, we're limited in, in our, our website stuff.
Okay.
Um, Aaron is a lot more knowledgeable than I am with respect to that stuff. I, I can't even, you know, I, I struggle with, with respect to websites. And so, um, I would not say that we could completely redo your website where you've got all the bells and whistles functioning. Because I understand from a city standpoint, I mean, to have a highly functioning website, you, you've got to have somebody that's got some serious expertise on how to put that together. I could probably put you in touch with somebody that could help you with that. Um, from our standpoint, we, we could, I, I feel, I feel pretty confident that we could help get information up on the site. But a total redo of your website or, and getting it to the level that, that it probably needs to be is gonna be out of my, you know, out of my wheelhouse. So, just to be perfectly honest.
Do you mainly Facebook?
We're mainly, we're mainly print, social media and, and PR through press release and, and articles and stuff like that. So, um, we do have the capabilities of doing other things, but we try to kinda stay in those lanes. Um, I mean, that's our, that's our, that's our sweet spot. Uh, that's not to say we can't do other things. We wanna be able to do other things. Um, I mean, we, we do graphic design. Um, you know, so if y'all came to me and said, um, "Hey, we need to do, um, city slogan and logo," we could do that. I mean, um, that's not what we do every day, uh, but, but we certainly could offer those services.
As far as the social media, do, do you work with the local businesses in far as maybe how to do a Facebook page, how to, to do different things within Facebook to promote their business and bring awareness to that? Do you, do you work with towns and the, the local business as far as that?
We do. Um, we, we started this, we kinda felt like there was a need for this because like, what I saw was that either they didn't, businesses didn't have a Facebook page or they had a person that was working there that they just said, "Well, you, you just do the Facebook page." And either they, either they didn't wanna do it or they, or they didn't have that person, you know. So, like, um, we saw the need in it. And so, instead of somebody, you know, a business hiring somebody to do that specific purpose, they hire us at a, at a discounted rate and we... they hire us at a discounted rate, and we, you know, that's what we do all day. So, it's worked well. What we do is, logistically, how we, how we make it work is, we have an account manager that sits down with the business owner. We have what's called a business intake meeting, and we ask a series of questions about that business. We try to get as much information about the business as we possibly can. We're going to follow that up with a photo shoot. So, we're learning about your business, we're trying to understand about your business, and then we're, we're doing a total inventory of your business through photography. Then, our account manager comes up with a social media plan. We've really been hammering down about a strategic plan, not just throwing darts at a dartboard with a blind pole on. We want to be strategic about how we go about your page. Ultimately, if I am, you know, running a Chevrolet dealership, the name of the game is getting more customers, that's it. And so, the posts and the things that we put on this page and the content that is on this page, obviously, at some level, it needs to be geared toward getting more customers. Our focus is audience visual and message. So, we're going to try to increase your audience. And this goes from whether or not you're a governmental entity to a business, to whomever. Like, if we start the city of Hamilton's Facebook page, our number one goal is to increase your audience. Like, you know, and I tell some people, right now, your audience is zero, you know. Let's get you to five hundred likes, let's get you to a thousand likes. On Instagram, let's get you to a thousand followers, you know. So, that's number one, audience. Second, visual, you know, this is a beautiful town, let's highlight that, you know. Let's come in, do some nice photography, and sort of make that the front porch of this town. If you go to Google and you just type in Hamilton, Alabama, what are the images that come up, you know? And I'm not saying they're good or bad, I'm just asking a question. You know, so, you want those images to be front and center. And I think if you've got a Facebook page and you're active on social media, that is a great place for people to go to. You know, if they type in Hamilton, Alabama on Facebook, and you've got a great looking page and you're active, that says something. It also says something to industries that might be looking to move here. It says something to people that might be considering, you know, considering living here. So, anyway, I just got off track there, but did I answer your question?
No, you did, I mean, to me, social media, I mean, it's the, to me, it's the cheapest way to really get who you are and what you do out there further these days. I've seen it with our industry, people using it, and basically it don't cost nothing to do it. And we need, we need help with that here.
Yeah. Well, you know, we'd love to do it. Obviously, there's, there's cost involved, and I don't have any costs today. I understand how cities work, and, and a lot of times when you're, when you're making a proposal, like, you know, I could have come in and just said, hey, here's, here's what I want to do, and these are, this is the cost, you know, and just gave you some, you know, baller plate thing to look at. But I mean, I think what I would just ask y'all to do is maybe just think about what you need, you know, and then, like, these are the things that we really need, you know. I mean, and I threw a bunch of stuff out there.
Are you working with any other cities now?
Not right now. I'm working with the county commission in Walker County. So, this is.
Is this new? Not new to you, but just working with counties or cities, is that something you don't normally do?
It is, it has been. We just started with the county commission this year, and so, we're, most of our work has been in Walker County. And so, we're, we're looking for other markets. And so, we're looking for markets that are close to Walker County. And so, with the work that we've done with the Walker County Commission, it has made me think more along the lines of city, city and county government. First of all, I've really enjoyed our work with the county commission, it's been awesome. Like, I enjoy it, I like working with governments, I like working with businesses and different organizations, and I think, so, when I, you know, when I'm thinking about expansion, I'm looking at other areas that could benefit from these services. So, so to answer your question is, you know, we are looking for, we're currently looking for cities and other, you know, markets to bring our program to, so.
I first sat down with Al about a year ago, maybe a little over. He came in to get a sandwich, he was traveling through, and he just looked around our town, and he said, "Got a pretty town." He said, "We'll talk to him or someday." So, about three weeks ago, we got an appointment to sit down. Scott Hunt and I met for lunch with them, and he brought some other folks that were interested in his programs and, and actually, a real estate salesperson, and she thought we could benefit from his services. So, she brought her husband along, and they joined us. And I just told him I'd like for you guys to hear from him because we've talked about selling our city to the, to the world. And if we find a way to do this on a regular basis, with follow-up, I think there's benefits in it for us. The main thing that I want us to do is be willing to follow through with it. We start something, I want us to be on board to follow through. The follow-through to me is so important. One little blast and you, you touch the tip of the iceberg. But if you follow through, we begin to make headways, I think, and get our name out there where we want it to be. And that's with recognition, showing people exactly what we have to offer, and making sure that they know we'll follow through with our promise if we say we'll do something for them if they come here, business or residential. I want everybody to understand what Hamilton's about, and they seem to have the tools to work with, and their energy is in making their company better at what they do. And when you've got somebody on board that's wanting to be better at what they do, and we give them an opportunity to work with us, I think we get the best of the best here. That's kind of how I've seen Al's company to this date. You can see quickly that he puts a quality product together. These are not second-rate magazines. And they're filled with a lot of support from clients that want to get their name out there, doctors and lawyers and other business people. And as he said, the story is told in here. Many times, you get better acquainted with the musicians of the area. Sometimes you get acquainted, Scott Hunt's dad was featured in one magazine, he's a land surveyor. But it's more not about the fact that Mr. Hunt's a land surveyor, it's about his life. And so, you learn so much more about the person by reading the story. And I think they have a quality product. My hope is that we can afford them. I, I don't know what the cost is going to be, but I'd like to see a proposal once we give you some parameters to work, as to what it would cost us monthly to be on board with. The council, of course, spends our money. I can't spend these money, these guys make the decisions about where we spend our money and how much of it we spend. So, I can only make suggestions. But I think we're all wanting to put our name out there a little further to the public, the public being far-reaching. I mean, when I say public, I want us to be recognized. If somebody does pull up our page, I want them to know more than just that we're here. So, that's, that's all I have as, in way of sharing thoughts about why we're here today. I felt there was benefit in bringing you to the table with us, and at least let us hear from you and get a concept of what you could do for us, so.
Yeah, and if y'all could just kind of tell me, you know, what's your interest in it? I mean, hey, Al, we think the, we like the social media management options, we, I mean, to me, bringing a magazine here is exciting. You know, that's exciting to me. I mean, all of it's exciting, don't get me wrong. But I mean, like, I like print, I'm still, I'm still kind of a print guy, you know. I mean, we do, most of our work is digital. But I think that, I think that having a print publication is a, is a very credible way of, of doing business, you know, and I, I like that. And, you know, when I was thinking about, okay, here's a market that we believe is a little bit underserved, how do we go about doing this? You know, I wanted to come through y'all first. You know, I mean, I could have, we could have, you know, just started going to local businesses, and we could have started a magazine and just said nothing about it. But I mean, you know, I want the leaders of this community to be on board with what we're doing. And, you know, we, we hope that y'all see value in this, and we'd love to bring what we do to this community. I think it would be a great benefit to this community. I think it could really be a source of pride like it is in Jasper. And I don't say that to blow up what we're doing or.
How long have you been working with the commission?
Uh, this year, yeah.
Out of twenty?
Yeah.
March twenty?
Yeah, since March, so. But what it's done for me is like opened up a whole new thought about PR, you know. I mean, a lot of times, PR just kind of gets, you don't know you need it, you know. And so, we've, and we've also implemented that PR into other businesses that we serve.
Does that help create more interest in Walker County?
It does. You know, it, it also helps connect the, the community even more, you know. What I, what I've discovered is that, and I hate to, I hate to put it this way, but people, at times, people are just ignorant to what's going on. They don't know what's going on. You know, I know there's frustration with, with government across the board that, that like, you know, hey, we're not getting our message out there, you know. So, it's important to have people that, that's what their job is, to get that message about what, you know, the positive things that governments are doing, you know, out there to the general public. Because I think a lot of people just, just don't know what's going on.
And also too, if I might add.
Yeah.
With just hard news stories generating, which are very important, but when they're generating from the government only, or like a, you know, council like this, it's important, but also you need that PR piece where we're putting that positive news out there to create an image that we're proud of, and that's what I've seen in Walker County. You know, I'm an outsider, I'm from North Alabama, and this magazine was my first impression of Walker County. This is right when I walked into my interview, this was sat right in front of me, and it was my first impression, and it was a great one. It was the best impression that Al could have given me. This is what I told the mayor, I could have walked around town and met all the people, and that was, we'd be fine and well, but this was the best first impression, and I'm twenty-three years old. And, and it's a print publication, but it's still so relevant and so credible. And we, we have this publication, digital like Al mentioned, and we also have seventy eight mag dot com. Y'all can visit that during the meeting or when you go home and think on this. But it's all very helpful for our city to create an image that we're proud of, that Jasper's proud of, so.
And I told the mayor, and I don't mean to keep going on, but I told the mayor that what, what kind of sums up what we do and our philosophy is that we want to do everything first class, you know, that's, that's it. That's what we want to do. If we're gonna, if we're gonna put a magazine out, we want to do that first class. You know, if we're gonna do social media management, we want to do it first class. If we're gonna do PR, everything we do, we have a standard of excellence for, and we just want to be first class in everything. So, if we're gonna do, come in here and do a publication, we want it to be the best, you know. If we're gonna do social media management for the city, we want to be the best. We want to have the best photography. And so, we, again, we just want to, you know, bring those services here. So, if y'all will let me know kind of what y'all are interested in, I can put some prices together.
Let us rediscuss this. At our NUX workshop, we will have just a roundtable with ideas, with share ideas. And then we'll send our package and let you process.
Okay.
And then we'll see if we can work together.
Okay.
We've got to move forward one step at a time with this because if we get on board, like I say, we want to be able to do the follow-throughs. So, let us be sure of what we're doing here, and we do want to identify our community and be as transparent with, with everybody that we serve as we can be, and communications is good. This, I think, would help us with communications. The people back here do a good job of broadcasting our meetings. We get lost in the shuffle as far as how we sell our services. What can this community offer to people who come here? You know, we, we sometimes need a little bit more in-depth than we can be able to get. Once we dismiss the meeting, then we don't get back with Scott a lot of times and say, Scott, we need you to run this for us. Or we need Forty Nine News to carry this. And they're willing people, these people want to help us, but we just don't connect like we should to get the news out there. So, that's why you're here today, to see if there's something we can do, some teamwork with you.
Yeah, and we want to be a conduit for that, you know.
I can't say enough about Forty Nine News and the newspaper. They, they're great folks to work with, and they do some good work for us, but it's just maybe not enough. And we're, we've talked about social media for three or four years now, and we've felt that that was what the people are looking for in the way of learning about things, events, this kind of thing. But just let us have another roundtable.
Yeah, sure.
And then we'll, we'll stay in touch with you. And if we can put a package together of what we need, then we can send it up line to you and you can give us some ideas.
Sounds good.
I thank y'all for coming today.
Thank you.
We've got just a little more material we want to cover before five o'clock, so we're gonna move on with the meeting.
Okay.
If it's okay with you.
Yeah.
Any other questions specific?
One last question.
Yeah.
On the magazine, how many subscriptions have you got?
Yeah, so, I think about two fifty. I know it was two hundred at one point, but I think since we really started kind of pressing with that for the last few months, I think we're about two fifty.
And they get sent out all over, so, just like they're out in Walker County.
Correct, anywhere. We just, and Aaron just implemented a digital subscription too, so we can, anybody all over the world can, can get that. So, so we're digital and print subscription, so.
Any other questions right now before we let Al and Aaron?
Thank y'all for having us, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much. Great to see you.
You too.
We have talked about our new college president, Mr. Dr. Haygood, and our attempt to meet him in the near future. He sent greetings today to myself, and he also is pretty revved up about his new position with the, being in the college system. And I, I sent a response to his greetings today. Thanks, Al. And I want us to try to meet Dr. Haygood maybe at one of these meetings, or invite him to a council meeting for a briefing. I'll go ahead and just let y'all read this, and I know he's been involved in the Walker County school system for a long time, but I want him to be just as interested now that he's assigned to the Hamilton campus. That's the greetings I got from him today. And Wade, to bring you up to date, we met with Andrea today, and we've got a list of this work that she's proposing, and we're gonna meet her Tuesday at seven thirty. and we've got a list of this work that she's proposing, and we're gonna meet her Tuesday at seven thirty, uh.
Tuesday morning?
Tuesday morning, seven thirty, at the Sullen's house to, uh, go over the list and really visually see what we're faced with.
Right.
Uh, I'm really, I'm really excited that we're looking back at the house to fix it, but when we talked about fixing this house two or three times, we couldn't decide if we wanted a carpenter with an overseer or if we wanted a out-and-out general contractor, uh, to come in and do this. We've had some carpenters before, and then we would turn out with the work finished, but it's non-compliant to the, uh, ADA compliance list, so. We don't wanna make any more mistakes when we spend this money to fix up this old house and, uh, when I say it's an old house, that's exactly what it is. Uh, and it'll never be anything but an old house, and it's got, it's old, and so it's gonna have a lot of needs going forward.
If we could get somebody, get repair and get somebody in there consistently, I think it'd, it'd help.
That house has got the house of love.
You know, just setting empty all the time.
It's, it sits there empty, and the house, it's empty, just don't get the love.
Gotta be used. If we're gonna do it, it's gotta be used, or we don't need to do it nothing. We gotta have somebody in there, I think, to be regular. We just don't do it.
Angela, uh, we're not that far from Monday night. Can you think of anything specifically that's gonna be on the agenda for Monday night?
I can't really. The only thing I have right now will be a few minutes.
Is that? We can do that now.
That's the only thing I can think of.
We're, we're winding the year down, guys, so we may not have a big agenda for this last meeting.
Last meeting, two thousand twenty.
And, uh, so, uh.
I can't think of anything else, honestly. I was trying to earlier and, can y'all, you think jumping out at y'all that we need to?
The last, at the last second before I walked out of my office to come to this meeting, I got a, a word from, uh, Tracy Estes. And he says there'll be a heavy hitters meeting here, uh, January the eighth. He'll, he's seeing how much actual room he's got at the meeting site for social distancing. He wants to include all of you guys, but we might not be able to have everybody there, but we're gonna have people from Washington, people from Montgomery, Speaker of the House, I know will be here. Uh, there's, uh, it's gonna be a big deal in cooperation with, uh, Tom Bigby Electric. So there'll be some new announcements, big time announcements made at that meeting, and so I just learned about it a few minutes ago. As I learn more, I'll fill you in. I don't know how many of you can be invited. He said I'll leave you there to welcome the guests and then turn the meeting over to me, and then I'll turn it over to the real heavy hitters. He said there's gonna be some outstanding folks here, so anyway.
Mayor, is any update on Loves still middle of June? Makes by January?
It's fourteenth, still the fourteenth, and it's not, that's not been changed. Y'all noticed the big sign has just gone up down there? Uh, it's gonna have the visibility we'll need. The, uh, service center has a SpeedCo.
And that's huge. I, we, we've seen their signs going here. We didn't know that.
Tell us what that is.
Um, it's kind of an enhanced service center, you know, usually like in Tupelo, for example, they've just got like a tire center. There's some
I think they've agreed to.
Things that they can do.
Come here and run that.
With the, with the SpeedCo, um, that's where I've changed the oil on all my trucks.
Okay. So it's a big deal.
Yeah, United, United States, and they can do other light work too.
They had a work, uh, not a works, uh, at Bevel yesterday, the, uh, career center. And they had quite a bit of interest in jobs coming there, correct, for people who can work there at Loves, so.
But SpeedCo was something that I've kinda mentioned, you know, early on, was when we were talking about this, uh, with Loves, and how they have other businesses. It's really, it's almost a separate business that they own. Um, so yeah, and that, that's, that was huge that, um, that that's gonna be part of it. It's also a bigger shop too, and if you notice, like, if you go to Tupelo Loves, it's just a two base shop. And our Loves is, I think it's about four things, which, you know, they have to have that for SpeedCo. It's huge.
You know more about it?
That's huge, yeah, it's big. We're really excited to see that.
Absolutely.
It'd be a huge hit for us.
If I were to venture a guess, uh, I'm gonna say that with the distribution of vaccines and all this stuff, uh, the reason for COVID to be prevalent is gonna end. I think we're gonna see the top of COVID start to fade, even none of those cases everywhere right now, and I believe that we're at a pinnacle of our best time ever to grow this city since back in the sixties when we had a real growth era. I think we're at the, the next pinnacle for Hamilton, Alabama, and I think it's our duty to bring this city as far forward as we can, and so we got a lot of work ahead of us, man, and there's no question about it.
No doubt.
And.
I'm excited, so.
I know, I know Scott's been working on, uh, gathering up information for exit seven, you know, the lighting he talked about a couple of weeks ago, but any, any word on any of that? Do you know anything about that, that you can share?
I've approached him on it, uh, he's, I know he's worked on it already.
Yeah, I did.
I've just talked to Estes Electric last week. They came here and did a, some lighting in our meeting room in here. We were about in the dark, if you hadn't noticed, but, uh, we got lots now, lots of lights. And I asked them to check all of our exits and make sure that our lights were working. Savores Exit Seven Lighting, I haven't had a report. DOT showed me a plan at one time that they had, and they recommended that we wait till the first business starts up before they light it. But we're thinking maybe the lighting would bring some interest in the business, or keep the people who are doing unsightly things out there in the dark
Right.
from congregating out there, so, uh, what we get, once we light it, is the ongoing maintenance and the bill.
Right.
If we light an unused exit, we gotta pay the bill for it, so we decide to go ahead with the lighting plan before we get a business.
Still have to maintain it regardless, once it's lit.
Sure, we, we maintain it.
Them all.
But is it time to light it? That's what we're trying to say.
I tried for four years and they said that, everybody said, if you had a business, we'll get it. We ever get it developed, you'll definitely get it lit. But I'm like, Scott, it's the first exit coming in, last exit going out, it's dangerous. But it would help, might create business if we get it, to get lit. They've always told me, state and every developer, that it has to be a business first. And that's been, you know, we've all, we've next, that's been the whole day.
Well, who were expecting, uh, exit growth, they're expecting it to wanna be around the Loves.
Yeah.
So, I don't know exactly. I've seen other places where Loves came and, and other businesses wanted to be near them, so.
There could be a pilot or something come on the other exit if they slip, something besides Loves.
Well.
Or motel.
One thing on that exit too, on ramps off and on, are we responsible for the trash that's on them ramps? Is that the state? That, that exit, if you get off coming from Tupelo, get off on that exit, there's trash everywhere. There's clothes been just thrown out.
Trucks spent a night there on.
And that's, that don't look good, and I don't know if that's your spy responsibility or if that's the state, but I didn't know who we need to contact to possibly look at that.
Well, if you're waiting on the state to pick it up, don't hold your breath.
Well.
Cause you'll turn blood to face.
But it, 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 it don't look good. We talked about that being the first exit you get off right there for Hamilton, and it's, it, it looks bad, and.
I would say if it ever gets picked up, we'll pick it up.
Right.
So, when do you want me to get started?
Well, I just wanted to bring to our attention that, you know, and I, you know, there is a lot of trucks parked on that exit too, or that ramp, and, um, it's just a.
I saw a, a mattress thrown out on one just a little bit, uh, east of here the other day. Uh, uh, it probably weighs four hundred pounds now that it's wet, you know? But, um.
I just didn't know if it was our responsibility.
People are shy about throwing stuff out, uh, they're quick to dump food containers, water and Coke bottles, and, uh, you know, everything you can imagine. Plastic don't go away, it lays there for the decades. The bush hog might get it next time they come along, chop it up a bit.
We mentioned, uh, cleaning, as far as cleaning up the city, if we got, gotten into their ordinance to see if there's anything else we can li- is that something we're gonna be looking at or applying?
They were supposed to put an ordinance, enable one's well.
It's probably in there, but it's, uh, how serious are we gonna be and how soon to take, tackle something like that?
That's gonna be, uh, uh, this, this came up, Andrea told me she had her list ready, and I let her come on today. Al insisted after he had lunch with me and, uh, Scott and the others the other day that he come at least meet you guys. He said, I don't know if we can work together or not, but he said, if you, if you will let them tell me what they want, I'll at least give them a price proposal on, um, doing this, so, uh, I'm not necessarily selling Al, I'm just saying that's the business he's in, and we've talked about, uh, expanding our opportunities to, to get out to the public, uh.
Mayor, one more thing, I'd.
Yeah, go ahead.
Over here at the, uh, softball complex, we've got concrete poured and blocks sitting there for a bathroom due. Is that something that, just in the works, I, I talked to Tim and we need, we need to get that project done. I mean, I think it's for women's restrooms, cause I think on the big weekends when they have softball tournaments up there, there's some restroom problems where Tim's told me at times, it's, it's bad enough that they're having, he'll have to close the men's restroom down to let the women use it, cause there's such a long line. Softball season's coming up. I hope we, we get back to some type of normalcy, uh, where we can have softball tournaments and baseball tournaments over there, but I didn't know what could be done.
Why don't we at least get permission to get some bids and see what we say?
Let's get some bids to, to get that done now, instead of waiting till softball season to get it done.
Well, let me see if I.
Pretty on the agenda, to at least propose to get bids. That way, once we vote on it, we can, we can get bids and.
If I can talk to him, I'll find out.
Well, I think he's out of town. You call him Tim?
He'll know the answer. He'll just answer.
He's at Disney World. He may not answer.
I thought they had somebody wanting to.
Hey, Tim. We're in a work session, we just talked about our softball field restroom for ladies.
Yeah, they are, they threw them up before we're maybe graduated and we started on them.
I think you're gonna concrete, maybe forward, and we've got a contractor that's gonna work on that restroom for us. You gonna get two more prices? Okay. Thank you. Let's continue to work on that so we can solve the problem by season, okay? Thank you. He's gonna, he said he thought the price he got was a little too high. He's trying to get two more competitive prices. That's proven, I like that.
I mean, it.
But he, he said he'll have it finished by softball season.
We got the, I know the blocks have been sitting over there, and it's just one of those little projects, like you said, we just, we gotta follow through them, so we don't need to just sit and.
Right. He, he's just trying to get the price down a little bit.
Right.
Okay, well, I've, I've held y'all to the guard. Y'all are gonna miss your supper, and I'm telling you, I, I don't mean this to rob. We're gonna, we're gonna end this meeting for today, and we're gonna reschedule our meetings, guys.
Yes.
Wade's delivery truck's just coming in there, and he can't leave his business and not get his products in his shop, so.
That's the only day it runs is Wednesday, sometimes it's two o'clock, sometimes it's five o'clock.
We're gonna try to find a more convenient day for this, especially when our boys' basketball's over. Uh, we're gonna try to get it on a date that, uh, we can all get here and, uh, tell me what's good, and that's when we'll call the meeting. I, I, I need to hear.
Good, anything for Mr. Ongel?
Anything but Thursday night for me, for sure. Thursday night, Thursday afternoon, some weekends out. Um, me and you gonna talk about Tuesday. Tuesday's fine, Tuesday afternoon. Monday afternoon is fine with me too.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm, I'm open.
I like to, I like to think that Tuesday's gonna be a better day for me, uh.
I like to get.
Thursday is absolutely not a good, a good evening for me. I, I've got lots of things that happen on Thursday that it takes me in other directions and Tuesday's is, would be my best day if y'all can work around a Tuesday. But what hour do you wanna have the meeting? You wanna have it earlier than four?
I think.
As late as I, late as I can.
The time's good, just get a date where everybody, it's not.
What I'm thinking is if we start at four, we'll just let the meeting continue on till we finish our business that day. So let's just say we'll be here Tuesday at four and, uh, uh, and we'll, we'll decide when we wanna start our Tuesday meetings. I don't wanna invol- get involved in Tuesday meetings if you causes dads to miss their son's ball games and things like that. Uh, cause I think it's important for sports or children in these events, and, but, uh, I'd rather work around that schedule. When does ball end, the basketball season? Do we not?
We're going after tomorrow night.
Is it? Is it?
Yep.
Okay. All right, with that said, we'll start meeting on Tuesday then. Tuesday, oh, count on it. Every Tuesday at four before we have our next council meeting. We won't meet every Tuesday at four. We'll only meet when the, next Monday night is our meeting.
Okay.
But y'all are meeting Andrea this coming Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
All right.
The house needs work.
Who's gonna call me and remind me at six o'clock in the morning?
I will.
We're supposed to.
That's the clerk's job. She'll call you.
Andrea's not a morning person.
I'm surprised she'll be there at seven thirty, to be honest with you.
She'll, she'll be there on Thursday.
That's fine with me.
She's dedicated, so.
She is dedicated.
She's very dedicated and does an outstanding job.
She's a fine person to be around, and she is, uh, heading up the wreaths across, wreaths across America, and she's not getting a penny of pay for this. I mean, this is, uh, this is just a community affairs, uh, freebie that we get from Andrea, and and she does a lot of things, uh, for the community without expecting too much back for, for it, but. So if you can just give her a little thank you now and then, that would go a long ways, and, and from time to time, we'll have work for her cause we, we can't do some of the things we do without, uh, having an architect. I did notice the historic office, Law Office building has been dismantled this week. Uh, that we had an opportunity to possess that, but it had gone, uh, the foundation of it had gone a little too far for us to think we could really salvage it without, we, we were gonna have to put soap flooring and some beams in it as well as about, uh, we would spend more on it than you can imagine to get it back up to some standards. I just couldn't see the city taking it over at the point that we were allowed to get involved. That just the foundation for the building was gonna cost us fourteen thousand dollars, just having a block foundation put in to sit it on. And then the reconstruction basically of the Law Office would probably cost fifty to sixty thousand to make it nice enough for people to come and visit, and then the maintenance that went with it and the insurance, and it goes on and on, so. With that said, thank y'all for coming. We appreciate the paper and the forty-nine news.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
And sincere, uh. Uh, we, uh, when we talk about communications and webpages and things, we don't disregard what you guys do for us. It's just something these people specialize in, and, uh, we, uh, not selling you guys short by communicating with people like Al Blatton. Thank y'all.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.